City of Stevens Point Plan Commission Special Meeting, recorded October 21st, 2025.
We'll call the Special Plan Commission Meeting to order. Director, roll call, please.
Of course. Mayor Wiesa is excused. Alder Person Nippon?
Here.
Commissioner Artson?
Here.
Commissioner Beacom?
Here.
Commissioner Moskoviac is excused. Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Schuler?
Here.
All right. Present, next first item, second item, I guess, technically on the agenda is presentation and discussion on the preliminary policy direction report for the zoning code rewrite.
All right. So I mentioned this to you folks, I think, the last time that we met for our regularly scheduled Plan Commission meeting, is that I'd be sending over to you folks a preliminary policy direction report. This is a strategy that I saw that a few communities here in the state have embarked on as part of, oh, thank you, Ginger. Now, we are unmuted. So, so as I was saying, last time that we had a Plan Commission meeting, I made reference to the fact that I'll be sending to you folks this preliminary policy direction report. And this report essentially is going to be a similar strategy that some communities here in the state have taken, really meant to establish this overarching commentary that residents have provided as part of the community engagement phase of this code rewrite, along with internal comments from city staff and other stakeholders at B. So just a few notes regarding this policy direction report before we get too carried away here. First off, really, what's the purpose of this report? The purpose of the report, first and foremost, is to identify more broad policy areas that should be explored as part of this code rewrite. It's not meant to identify specific code language as evident within the packet here. With that said, obviously, there's some section, or there's some policy directions that are more detailed than others, some that are more obvious than others. You know, one example is, I think, in the zoning map section, there's a policy recommendation of creating an institutional zoning district. I think it's pretty self-explanatory that any existing churches, municipal buildings, county buildings, cemeteries, et cetera, that they would have an institutional zoning designation going forward. Others are more, you know, there's other policies included in this report that are going to require a lot more conversation, and there's a few different ways that we as a community could take in achieving that goal. I think one of the examples included in here was the dark sky friendly ordinance. You know, there's questions as far as, do you apply this only to new construction? And if so, what are some of the rules and regulations regarding what light intensity is too intense, some of the fixtures that may be required or desired for any light fixtures? And then also, really, what do we do with existing developments? Should they be exempt from this policy going forward? Or what if in 10, 20 years from now, there's a parking lot project, for example? Should they then be required to be subject to this ordinance provision? That's just an example of, there's a lot of webs that we could go down for some of these, that it's just going to require a lot more conversation going forward. Another purpose of this report is to have these policy recommendations, to the greatest extent possible, be consistent with the city's 2005 comp plan. By statute, zoning ordinances are intended to be and are required to be in alignment with a comprehensive plan. Obviously, we as a community, we're going through rewrite of the comprehensive plan right now. You've heard me say this before, and I'll say it again, even though our comprehensive plan is 20 years old, there's still a lot of really good stuff in it that is still going to be applicable today. So I think there's still a lot of relevancy here. And then lastly, really, the purpose of this report is to tie in these specific recommendations relative to the feedback that was received over the last, really, six months or so. So the structure of this report is broken down into the different bullet point items shown on the screen here, starting with housing, all the way down through section addressing areas where direction is needed. So really, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go over each of these sections, kind of give an overview of each of these policy recommendations. There's questions, comments, obviously, feel free to chime in and ask as you see fit. Really, the big thing that I'll stress right from the jump, this areas where direction is needed, is really going to be the section that I'm going to be giving you homework on over the next month plus. You know, these are going to be recommendations where I haven't received a consensus from folks, and it's really going to be the onus on you as commissioners and council members to provide me that direction. So, any questions?
Do you have any introductions you'd like to make?
Introductions? Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I guess one thing I want to say, too, before I kind of segue into that, obviously, the community engagement phase of this project took, really started in, I think, April or May through October. There was a lot of work, a lot of time and effort spent into having these neighborhood meetings, these public surveys. Really appreciate, I think, every alder attended at least one of these meetings, some more than one, merrier one of them. So I really appreciate you folks for spending the time to sit in on them. Appreciate you folks for hearing from me every month about this code rewrite. And then appreciate also our two interns that we had, had and currently have for this code rewrite. Anna Menominy, you saw earlier this summer, and then Anna Sager, who is here for this fall and spring. So a lot of good work that you folks have, that you and I have done so far and will do. So, thank you, Jeff.
And Anna and Anna?
Yes, it was, I think I've mastered it now, but there were some challenges.
All right.
All right. So, starting with housing, so this is the topic area that has the most policy recommendations. And I think that's not, shouldn't come as a shock, just given that's one of the biggest areas of focus, not only in our community that you've heard over the years, but in other communities as well. So first policy recommendation is to make legally established duplexes within the current R3 single and two-family residence district a permitted use. This is actually something that Commissioner Beacom, you mentioned probably a good six months plus ago now, about, we have a provision in our zoning code allowing for single-family homes that are grandfathered to continue in perpetuity, even if they don't meet lot size requirements. However, that's not the case for duplexes. You know, in my five and a half years or so with the city, there's probably been dozens of notices that I've sent out to property owners saying, hey, because your duplex, you're not conforming duplex was vacant for a period exceeding one year, you've lost your nonconforming status, and ergo, you can't utilize that as a duplex going forward. I think this is a situation for me personally, where if you have a house that's constructed as a duplex, and it's historically been used as a duplex, why should we use a technicality to prohibit that going forward? So really, what this is saying is that for existing duplexes, existing duplex uses that are not conforming with respect to lot size requirements, that they'd be grandfathered in in perpetuity and wouldn't be able, would not be subject to that loss of duplex status.
Would this apply, would this include restoring duplex approval to lapsed units?
Correct.
So the ones that you just talked about in your experience, that have been given a notice that they can no longer be a duplex, they would be restored to being able to have a duplex?
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you. I was hoping that was the case.
And one thing, yeah, and one thing I'll just say, this will apply to this item, and really, all, really, the remainder of the conversation. I'm referencing existing zoning districts by name. Obviously, as part of this code rewrite, there's going to be new zoning districts in name and in quantity. So this is just getting at the principle that if there's existing duplexes here in the city, regardless of what zoning designation those lots will fall in in the future, they would be grandfathered in perpetuity, even if they don't meet that new minimum lot size requirement. So that's number one. Number two, this is something I alluded to earlier, and this is maintaining the existing allowance to construct a single-family home on a nonconforming lot. So currently, we have in our code where if you have a lot that does not meet minimum lot size requirements, you are permitted to construct a single-family home or other non-residential land uses that's permitted in that district, regardless of if it meets lot size minimums or not. You know, that's been a provision that I've used over time for single-family homes, and honestly, even commercial uses as well. I know Caribou Coffee on the north side of town was one example where it technically didn't meet minimum lot size requirements, but since that lot was in existence pre-1979, they can construct there even if they don't meet that size. So this is really just stating we want to continue that existing policy. Number three is consider expanding areas of the city where duplexes are a permitted land use. So within the bottom of page five includes three general areas that we could consider and explore further as part of allowing duplexes going forward. Number one would be, first area would be generally the development between Aspires Hospital and Gerke Park. Lot sizes are generally smaller, it's a little bit more dense, compact, the way it is, more copacetic with more two-family residential uses. Second area being lots that's bounded by Clark Street, Minnesota, Dixon, and Michigan, kind of more of the east central core of the city. And then lastly, lots immediately adjacent to commercial land uses along Church Street, really intended to serve as that gradual land use transition that really doesn't exist right now. If you look at that Church Street corridor, you have a lot of single-family homes abutting the more intense commercial uses that exist along the corridor.
The report says, please note that this report does not advise greatly expanding areas where duplexes are allowed. What's the philosophy behind that?
I think it's, I guess, a couple of reasons. One, maintaining duplexes in areas where the lot sizes are similar in nature, I think it would be, I guess, for me, it would be a little unnerving if we would allow duplexes in areas where lots are, say, a half acre in size, trying to keep that in more core, compact, more densely populated areas of the city. And that's really, once we get, you know, generally speaking, like east of Wilshire is where the lot, average lot sizes tend to get larger, once you get both north and south of Main Street.
But could, just kind of a general thought, as we look at the whole thing, could duplexes be considered the starter home of the future?
Could be.
You know, if we're looking for ways to get people, ownership, and then have the ability built in to offset some of their overall costs, I don't know what the technicalities are for mortgage lending, that type of thing, but as I looked at that, I thought that sort of a little negative take on the duplexes in other areas, and I don't know if that's really the case.
Yeah, and so, you know, this was obviously balancing a lot of different commentary that was provided through meetings, through surveys. One of the comments, one of the prevailing comments that were raised, both through surveys and through in-person communication, was really wanting to maintain the owner occupied and renter occupied dynamic that exists. And one of the concerns that was raised more frequently was if we incite more and more duplexes, allow for duplexes in basically every part of the city, that that could tarnish the balance that we have right now with owner occupied and renter occupied housing.
Well, I hope that part of the discussion, we sort of really get a chance to emphasize the real benefits of homeownership, as opposed to just creating sort of like a false dynamic that, oh, we have to have this and not that.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that's what this is doing, but I just want to be careful that if we're looking at ways to economically get people into their own homes, you know, that's certainly a form that I think is, has at least some, like, basic potential, again, without knowing the ins and outs of exactly why, how that goes about in terms of the lending and your qualifying for that, so.
And of course, there's ways around that, per se. You could encourage zero lot line duplex development. That, given the size of Point, isn't really, there hasn't been a lot of zero lot line development constructed over the last five, 10 years. Condo development especially is even worse in terms of how much units have been built. It's been next to nothing. I think there's ways, I mean, there's ways within our code that we could more encourage that type of development that would still soften some of the concerns about the owner occupied, renter occupied dynamic.
I don't want to sidetrack us too much, but the zero lot line that was built into the new subdivision going in off Berlowski, right? The percentage of lots were zero lot lines. Was that because of just like the street network and the land that was left and what you had to use to create lots?
So those lots were designed to be either zero lot line duplexes or standalone single-family homes. All the homes built so far have been strictly single-family. Thanks, Phil.
Before we get too much farther, are we using duplexes as a term to include zero lot lines, or is that something completely separate from a zero lot line? Those are often first homes, or a nice everything on one level for a senior to move out of a larger home into a smaller home and open up something else for someone, a family, you know? Just for clarification, that, does duplex include zero lot line in the unit, or is it specifically?
Yeah, my, I guess my thought process with that is that zero lot lines would be separated, would not be included as part of this. I mean, there's, conceivably, you can design a code so that zero lot line duplexes are permitted within single-family zoning districts as well, because it effectively is still not a single-family home.
You're basically talking about two owners within a connected two units, yeah.
Yep. All right. Number four, so amend the traditional neighborhood overlay district, building setback requirements. So this is something, traditional neighborhood overlay district, this was required as part of the smart growth legislation in the early 2000s. And really, since we as a city adopted our traditional neighborhood overlay district around that time, as far as I know, we haven't amended it or even looked at it since, understanding what's working well and what's not working well. We, in our overlay district standards, we frankly do the bare minimum. There's other communities who go a lot, who are a lot more elaborate as far as specific design standards, specific use allowances, more than just what we have, talking about setback requirements and permitted versus conditional uses. So really, this is identifying the fact that we want to make sure that building setback requirements in this traditional neighborhood is consistent with the built environment that exists right now, which I could all but guarantee you, at least through my preliminary research, preliminary data manipulation, the average setback requirements don't meet, don't meet what's existing right now. The average setback that's provided is significantly less. So this would be looking at just reducing it to more of a reasonable number, so we have more legal conforming structures.
One quick question.
Yeah.
Would it be helpful for you if we gave our opinion as we go through these? Because I'm like, yes, 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 so far. So I guess head nods that really on the right track and not needing any additional, other than the work you're going to do on it, right? Okay, so that's where I'm at so far.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, same. Some good stuff already.
Okay. Yeah. Ben? All right. So number five, so rewrite the city's accessory dwelling unit. I think all of you, maybe with the exception of Commissioner Schuler and Beacom, I don't believe you two were on the commission at the time when we wrote our accessory dwelling unit ordinance back in 2022, but, you know, this was a fairly lengthy process that we as a commission and as city staff undertook to write it. And, you know, one of the prevailing comments I've heard thus far is, there's just so much red tape that it makes constructing an ADU cost prohibitive and just not realistic because of the zoning regulations. You know, I think the big ones specifically would be the separate utility connections. You recall the first applicant who requested a conditional use permit to build an ADU maybe two years ago? She ultimately scrapped that idea because her cost estimates to have separate utility connections ran, I believe, 50, 60,000, just that alone, not even counting all the other costs associated with that project. So that is a major sticking point. And what I mentioned in here in the packet as well is there is a lot of traction in the state legislature regarding accessory dwelling units and a municipality's ability to regulate it. Both sides of the political aisle have competing bills on the floor as we speak. I think the Democratic side more or less says, hey, communities cannot make the allowance of accessory dwelling units more restrictive than that of constructing a single-family home. You have to follow the same process. Whereas the Republican-led ADU bill says municipalities cannot prohibit the construction of an ADU within existing homes and within existing accessory structures. I'm saying all this in this context of the fact that both sides of the aisle are talking about it lends me to believe that there will be something passed in the near future. What it is, TBD. And so I think this is something where it would behoove us as a community to keep tabs of it, what this end result is, and address it accordingly, so.
Can we go bullet point by bullet point through those?
Yes, on the bottom page six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The first one is with the no conditional use permit, I was curious what the reasoning for that was. That seems to provide the maximum protection for both landowners and neighborhood interests. And so I'm curious what the actual, because that's always been brought up as a sticking point, oh my gosh, it's onerous, but it also is something that provides protection on both sides of the issue. And so what would be the reason, it's seen here as, consider doing away with that?
Yeah, a couple of reasons. One, folks view the need for obtaining a conditional use permit as another barrier, and some folks just don't feel comfortable pleading their case within a public forum like this. Another reason is the development rules for constructing an accessory dwelling unit, specifically how close they can be to lot lines, would be similar, would be identical to that of constructing a detached garage. And so I think that's the perception that folks have raised to me, is if the setback regulations, the height regulations are the same for constructing both a detached garage and an accessory dwelling unit, why should we force somebody to say, oh, building a detached garage, you can stop in our office, pull the building permit, and away you go? However, an accessory dwelling unit, you have to go through all these hoops.
Well, look, conditionally, sorry about that. A conditional use permit is for a use that's considered permitted, but it has certain things that you need to really pay attention to in order to make it okay, right?
Correct.
And so by us removing the need for a conditional use permit, we'd basically say that it's the same as a garage, there are no other outstanding issues, and we're fine with it.
Yeah, I mean, because.
That's staff's position?
Correct. I mean, because really, the main items that you look at, that I and you folks would look at for an ADU request would be your building heights, your setbacks, your separation from the primary structure. In my opinion, that can be built into the code as ordinance requirements. If you meet those requirements, cool, you can pull a building permit. If you can't meet those requirements, you either ask for an area variance, or you amend the project plan accordingly.
Okay.
Done? I'm trying, maybe. Along that same lines, but I think I may disagree a little bit, because what we're saying is that it's the structure that's the important thing, and when it comes down to the ordinance and, you know, it's the actual physical structure. But I think there's a big difference between a dwelling unit and a garage, and so is the use of the structure, is the dynamics of the structure a consideration when you're citing a structure? Meaning, would a smaller structure, but more chaos associated with it, be a better, you know, is that something that we can zone for or against?
And ultimately, the development regulations, you can put really anything as you see fit, with, obviously, subject to limitations of police power, depending on what the state stat says. But, you know, I guess another reason why regarding the permitted versus conditional use permit is, if you look at the core of the city, the area that falls within our traditional neighborhood overlay district, somebody could pull a building permit to construct a house and need to maintain a four-foot side yard setback. The setback that requirement for constructing an ADU from the side yard would be five feet. If they're basically the same setback requirements, why should we, why should we allow a house to be permitted by right? However, an accessory dwelling unit would still require a conditional use permit, when they're both, both structures are used as a form of habitation, arguably, in accessory dwelling units, I mean, it's smaller than, tends to be smaller than a house, so.
But you're talking, I mean, right, no, that's a good answer, and I'd buy that. Again, that north side area, just lots of lots, and the, the teeny houses things, you know, that's still coming up, and I don't know where that's at, but I see lots that are saying, no, you can't put a house there, but if you put a little house there, well, maybe you could put a house there, so.
And we'll touch on that a little bit later, too, about size requirements for a primary house, for a primary structure. So, I think you wanted to go through all the bullet points?
Yeah. I guess in terms of the, eliminate the requirement for separate utility connections, I guess I'm curious, it's a technical question, I don't know if you can answer it, but just how does, how is proper service provided? And is, like Director Limpke, has he expressed his opinion on that? And what are the potential drawbacks? You know, I see the savings because you don't have to run all the way out to the street, but at some point, you have to go in the ground and connect to what is in your home to run, to service that.
Yeah, so I mean, I have talked with Director Limpke about it. You know, his overall statement was, there isn't a need to require separate utility connections, in his eyes. Obviously, you know, one of the reasons why we as a, we as a commission elected to have this separate utility connection requirement a few years back was, hey, if the person who's occupying the accessory dwelling unit, if they don't pay their water bill, they should only be the ones who get their water shut off instead of both those living in the ADU and the house. I guess, it, for me, it goes back to the, whoever's living in the accessory dwelling unit is in agreement, there's an agreement between who's living in the accessory dwelling unit and who's living in the primary structure. Personally, I feel like that's more of a civil issue of, if you're not owing up your, paying up your water bills, that's something that you two have to figure out as to who pays what and at what time, so.
Well, that was going to be my question, you kind of hit on it again, is, right, you can split it off, but there'd have to be some type of agreement between the two. Would that be something we'd be involved with? You kind of suggested that should just between the two occupants, so we wouldn't have any say on it, or they wouldn't require any specific documentation? Because that goes back to the reason why you'd have separate connections, just to give a degree of independence and protection.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a desire to have some, I guess, verbiage, stating as such, I mean, currently in our ADU code, in our ADU ordinance, we say that there has to be a restrictive agreement signed between the property owner and the city, saying that the property owner agrees to live in the primary house for a period of, like, eight or 10 months in a calendar year, something like that. You could always include a provision within that restrictive agreement addressing the utility component of it.
I think state law states that you can't have utilities in a tenant's name if they're shared. So if the utility is shared, it has to stay in the primary's name.
Yeah, for sure.
I had a concern about that. There's no incentive to conserve anything if your rent includes a cost, if it's, you include utilities, and it's a fixed rate every month, you could run your water all night long, all day long, and you're still only paying that fixed rate.
You wonder why renters get a bad.
Or you may be conserving a lot, and you're still getting a bigger share of what the homeowner thinks you might owe. So you may end up paying more for utilities, because an unscrupulous homeowner is going to charge you more for electricity and water and gas than if it was in your own name, because you have the power to conserve, so.
I suppose you just leave it at the end of your lease, then?
I just don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Bad mouth, fat person. I mean, the water follows the property anyway. WPS won't, but even if they skip out, water's going to go with the parcel. Interesting point, though, I like it.
Okay. And Airbnbs?
Agreed. Well, I would just, are you done with your bullets?
Yeah, were they ready?
I'm just on to the next bullet.
Okay.
Let he who wants to speak. Well, I'll start with that one. Maintain the requirement that accessory dwelling units cannot be utilized as a short-term rental. You know, this has been a disagreement between our community or housing community and the city. I'm not sure the city is within state law on this to begin with. So I don't know that you can restrict that. So our ordinance states that and we've got special zones for it. But I don't, I think if that ever gets challenged, the city's going to have a challenge.
And what I'll say is the Republican-led bill that I referenced earlier addressing ADUs, that's explicitly outlined in their bill saying that ADUs cannot be utilized as a short-term rental. So my assumption is that there's been the legal vetting by the policymakers that be, before they actually drew up that bill.
Okay.
And then I guess to address item, bullet point number four, the relaxation of minimum lot size requirements, obviously, that's going to be dependent on the zoning map, new zoning map being created, what the new districts are, and what the minimum lot size requirement is for each of those districts. So it's, that's more of a TBD.
Good. Because my only comment was, how is this not a negative? And I think it probably ties into if you're talking about impervious surface ratios being introduced for lots, then the amount of footprint that an ADU have would be very much relevant to the size of lot and what you could actually do.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the last one is, so the allowing building setback requirements for ADUs to be the same as building an accessory structure. This is really similar to the conversation we had earlier, especially with Commissioner Hartson. So. Any other, I guess, questions for the ADU piece?
I love the expansion of local control that the state legislation brings us.
Yeah.
Again.
All right. Item number six, allow cottage home cluster developments as a permitted use within higher intensity, single-family zoning districts. So include it in the packet, so is a kind of a general definition of what is a cottage home cluster development? That is to allow smaller homes to be grouped together and share a common public space. This is really a good area, a good example as it relates to our current zoning code is that we don't address cottage home development at all. Really, late 1970s cottage home development, I guess, in my understanding, really wasn't much of a thing back then. But this is really just addressing for more of your higher intensity, single-family districts, those that require a little bit lesser lot size requirements than what would, than versus other areas of the city, that that would be allowed as a permitted use.
Couple of quick questions. Are there any example of places in the city where that type of development might work?
So that's actually been, so the common property just to the west, that's been, it's not built, but constructed, but that's the concept plan that's being discussed at the moment.
Okay. And then is staff comfortable with creating requirements that work? I mean, we just went through the ADU where the initial requirements, and it's not a hit towards staff, it's just that the ADU came through and it was unworkable. And now it's being changed. And so this is also a challenge to take something new and make it kind of accessible and worth using.
Will it be a challenge? Yeah, I think in part just because of the, there's a level of unknown that exists because there isn't a prevalent examples of cottage home development here in Plano.
I mean, as a devil's advocate to that, I would say I'd rather have staff and the city adopt something that's more restrictive and then over time loosen it up a little bit than go the other direction.
Okay.
And I assume the overall density is going to be based on the underlying zoning district, that type of thing?
Current.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Item number seven, this is talking about minimum size requirements for constructing the house. I think this is something you all are relatively aware of. So in all of our residential zoning districts, with the exception of our R1 district, so on the screen is the zoning map, that would be the areas shaded in teal, so southeast side of the city and then really the far north end of the city by the Whitetail subdivision area. For those parts of the city, the minimum size requirement for a house would be 1,200 square feet. Everywhere else for residential zoning districts, the minimum size would be 900 square feet. So this is looking at reducing that minimum size requirement down to a undetermined number. Item number eight.
Just one second.
Thank you.
I guess, what are the minimum habitability requirements? And a question I had before that sort is about all of the housing stuff, will we ever be able to regulate habitable space based on minimum square footage requirements for bedroom, living room area? I know we were, when we talked about the family definition, we were told that we can't consider that at all, that the state has said you can't take that into consideration when saying what's living space within an apartment.
So we do have minimum size requirements for a bedroom within our property maintenance code. I think it's, I'd have to look offhand, it's I think like 125 or 150 square feet minimum per bedroom. The other components of a, of a dwelling unit would all be regulated by the UDC through building code. So, and what I'll say, speaking a little bit further on the UDC component of it, there's certain rooms within a dwelling unit that they regulate minimum size, like minimum size of a mechanical room, for example, how much spacing, how much clearance would be needed. They don't explicitly state mechanical room has to be at least 50 square feet. What they say is there has to be so much separation between certain fixtures within a mechanical room relative to exterior walls, relative to the doorway.
So size of new construction can be based on meeting those minimums?
Correct.
As opposed to the arbitrary 900 or whatever?
Yeah. So like, for example, kitchens, UDC doesn't regulate the minimum size that a kitchen has to be likewise a, likewise a living room, as long as it meets, like hallways meets minimum width requirements for accessibility, you'd be golden.
Okay. So a lot of these, you have feedback, and this one's got 82%. Respondents feel that there's two little starter homes, which I think is an issue for us. Do we have feedback on how people feel about the house or the lot next to them having a 900 square foot house on it?
Through these surveys, no, I haven't explicitly asked that.
With a 1,200 square foot attached garage.
And so that, and, you know, this is a very specific policy recommendation is one where, if I'm going to be honest, I don't think it's going to have as much of an impact as what people think it will be. And that's addressing that last comment right there, is that an attached garage is part of the principal structure. Ergo, 900 square feet's the minimum. If somebody has a two-stall garage, you're going to be talking, what, to be comfortable, 18, 20 foot wide by 20 feet deep? I mean, that would be tight. And that would be tight, but shave off a considerable portion right then and there, and that's not living space. So. Do I think this is going to have a very, a big, significant impact on affordability? Not necessarily because of that fact. Most, most lots are going to have some gro, some sort of a garage, albeit attached or detached. Done.
Okay.
Okay. Item number eight, so incorporate, incorporate development bonuses for the construction of affordable housing. So this is something explicitly stated, stated in state stats about communities cannot have differing development regulations for affordable housing versus other forms of housing. But one way around that that municipalities have taken to encourage the development of affordable housing is to provide certain incentives baked into, baked into the code, saying if you provide this type of housing, if this type of housing development is performed, you can receive certain leniency in specific development regulations, really subject to you folks in the council.
It's like a performance zoning.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
So some of the examples in here, so allowing an increase in maximum building height, allowing for a reduction of required off-street parking, allowing a reduction of lot size requirements. Obviously, that will be TBD, so.
Can I comment on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would love if Plan Commission had just a discussion on affordable housing, maybe an open discussion at a future meeting, because I feel like most people don't understand it. And recently, when we looked at some of the proposals, you know, this 30, 50, 80, the argument was that's going to be nurses and teachers and chiropractors. You know, does that mean we're subsidizing people that can afford other housing in the community so that they move into these units, which are more expensive, but they qualify for? You know, are we studying impacts on business districts? I just feel like everybody puts roses around affordable housing, but we don't understand the strategies very well on what we're looking at. And the second bullet, allow for reduction of required off-street parking, that's a trap. You know, the city has made a number of miscalculations and just missteps in recent years with developments when it comes to parking. That's one that I would flag.
Yeah. And we'll touch on that a little bit later, but appreciate it. Any other comments for that one? All right. Item number nine, so amending conditional use permit requirements for certain multifamily housing developments. So currently in our code, construction, three or more housing units would require a conditional use permit, so triplex, fourplex and onward. This would be looking at amending that number from three to some sort of number. If you want to, I think the three to eight is a common bundling of housing, housing unit ranges that communities transition from requiring a conditional use permit to making it be permitted by right. So obviously, it's not like we're married to that specific number as being the cutoff.
So is three to eight considered to be the missing middle?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay. And again, I guess the conditional use permit really allows you to kind of vet possible impacts. And I guess part of the, my thought on that then is if we're thinking of transitioning away from conditional use permits, are there abilities that this new code can give to staff to try to provide similar oversight to the typical type of things that the Plan Commission would talk about in a conditional use?
Yeah, and I mean, this is a, an overarching goal as part of this rewrite is establish more zoning districts so that you can reduce the amount of conditional uses within each district. By doing so, you eliminate the CUP requirements, but you bake in a lot of the development regulations within, within the code itself. So some of the, I guess, the hot button issues that you as a commission have observed over the past for multifamily development requests, that would be built into, built into the code itself.
Well, I know that back in the day, the county had inserted a list of, a small list of things that every commercial application would be subject to a review, right? And if there's, and I'm not familiar with it enough to know if the current city code has one, but that is a way to do it, just in the general provisions, that every development will be subject to these bits of review. I mean, that, I guess that's one way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, all what we have now is, hey, you're required to submit these different types of plans as part of the plan review phase, but no, we don't have that right now. And I like that idea.
Yeah, I think the general provisions is not a bad spot for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Item number 10 is a factor we've talked about in the past, so eliminating the conditional use permit requirement to construct more than one principal structure on the same lot. I think the challenge here is how many structures are being built on the same lot? I think most people can agree there's a difference between if you're constructing two duplexes on the same lot versus 15 duplexes on the same lot, right? So.
What about like access driveways, things like that? Is that still governed when you have multiple to make sure if it sells later, that it's not? You know what I'm asking? As far as if you, if you put multiple homes on the same parcel, is there something to dictate how the access to each of those homes has to go?
Really would be a, tends to be a, the technical, no. As of now, no, there's not. I mean, if it would be, if there would be multiple buildings constructed over two or three lots, then of course, there would be some sort of shared access agreement between those given parcels, but.
I'm just wondering for like emergency services or something. I mean, is there, is there anything that governs how you can get to a house if you have multiple on one lot?
I mean, there's, I mean, yes, as part of the development review, I mean, our police and fire departments look at like the internal circulation, minimum, minimum plane widths for driveways within the site.
Well, I guess, I don't know if this is related to yours or not, but if you've got a multi-building, multifamily development, obviously, there's shared drives, there's parking. That's not an easement or anything like that, it's just part of the approved site plan, right? It's sort of like dedicated to that purpose?
Correct.
But something like this have a similar arrangement if you have to access the property to get to your drive, to get into your?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Item number 11, so this was exempting greenhouses, pergolas and gazebos from meeting maximum size allowances for accessory structures. So we allow by code, an unlimited number of accessory structures, so long as that cumulative size does not exceed 900 square feet. There's been a lot of commentary provided to me over the years about why are greenhouses considered? Why are pergolas, gazebos, since-
My porch.
They serve more often than not as a different function to that of a detached garage or shed. So, so be looking just to exempt that.
Do we know why 900 square feet was always the magic number? And should it depend on the size of the lot, really?
Beats me, but I believe, so it's been on the books for a while, and I know the village of Plover just amended their max size allowances within the last like six months or so to a year. I believe they had 900 square feet. So I'm guessing this was back when the city and the village were under county P&amp;Z jurisdiction, that they just agreed upon this number as the barometer. So. All right. And then the last one, so prioritize single-family development within fringe areas of the city and within annexed land consistent with the city's future land use map. This is really just highlighting the prevailing commentary about we need more single-family homes. So when we look at outward development, that should be the type of housing development that we prioritize, so long as it is consistent with the future land use map, obviously. And I guess the last comment I'll say about this housing section overall is there is a targeted emphasis on my part to have a balance between addressing the need for additional housing units as part of new construction, as well as rehabilitation of existing housing units. I think a lot of the commentary that exists is focusing on new construction, new construction, new construction, which is obviously a need. But given the aggregate age of our housing stock, especially in certain parts of the city, that is definitely something we should prioritize and encourage zoning being one avenue for property owners to perform maintenance as they, as necessary to maintain those housing units going forward. All right. Transportation. So first one, and this was the one that probably see, received, received the most interest and buy-in arguably amongst all the different neighborhood meetings, and that is to adopt a dark sky friendly lighting ordinance for multifamily and other non-residential developments. We don't have any standards outlining how, how bright is too bright within a proposed development, even though this is technically a review standard for you folks to look at for CUP requests. So I touched on this a little bit earlier, but the, the underlined section of policy recommendation number one is so, is for you folks in the council to consider in the coming months, really how you incorporate this dark sky friendly lighting. Is it just for the new development? Is it just for the new development? Do you somehow incorporate it as part of existing development when looking into the long term? I guess what's the, what's the prioritization for how you, how you administer this ordinance going forward?
I mean, I would say obviously, new, and then when it's being redone, and possibly to incentivize people that are not conforming to this change. Is there, I mean, there's got to be a balance here between lighting safety and lighting for privacy?
Yeah, and this is actually, this is actually something that Anna's been working on a lot over the last couple of weeks, of looking at other communities' lighting ordinances. And there's a lot of, a lot of different strategies that communities take. Some do maximum amount of foot candles up the lot line and look just strictly at lot line, uh, property boundaries, and that's it. Others have limitations, given the intensity of land uses, based it off of that. So personally, I'm more keen to identifying max, maximum lighting along exterior lot lines and call it a day. Anything that's within the interior of the lot can be addressed through some of the design requirements for the light fixtures itself, i.e. making it downlit.
Yep.
So.
That's, yeah, that's how it works in the business part, so.
Yeah.
Zero at the lot line and everything down.
Yeah.
Yeah, there can be some areas that you just can't do that with, but in existing lighting, as innovative lighting technology continues to come on the market, you know, it may behoove the city to change some of those things out where, where possible, where conceivable, where it would save money in the long run and provide some dark sky for some of the neighborhoods. Some places, you're just going to need the overhead streetlights, but if, particularly stuff that's on demand, because then it's not, it's only on when a car or a person approaches. So you, you kind of do both. Provide some safety and some dark skies. Technology's getting better all the time. So I like the idea of incentivizing that to replace some of that stuff, or.
Well, there's other programs too that.
Homeowners, yeah, do stuff like that. I mean, tonight, if we didn't have the rain, there's the Orion meteor shower, and there's a comet, Comet Lemon is in the area for a few more nights as well. I can see some of those from my backyard out there in the east side of town, and it's of value to me. So wherever we can, I hope we can do it.
Okay. Second item is rewriting the city's bicycle parking ordinance. So this is actually something that's been worked on amongst our Bicycle and Pedestrian Street Safety Commission this year. So currently, in our zoning code, in our bike parking ordinance, we require bicycle parking accommodations kind of in the aggregate for all commercial, industrial, and non-m multifamily uses, if you provide. And I think it's based off of the number of parking stalls that are provided. And so what the, the work of the Bike Ped Commission over this past year was working on is kind of changing the metric that you use to regulate how much bike parking is required and using that, changing that metric to specific land uses. This is something that I raised at Bike Ped Commission back in the day, but technically, a car wash type land use would be required, would be subject to bike parking requirements. I don't think people are going to take their bicycle into a car wash. I could be wrong, but stranger things about it. But, so this is really.
But they might work there and have to ride their bike.
Yeah.
But yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, this is basically doing more of a, the intention here is more of a strategic realignment, making sure that certain land uses that ought to require more bike parking, like multifamily development, that that's adequately encapsulated in this ordinance when compared to land uses that is, that's not going to incite as much bike parking needs. And that's something I can send you, kind of the tentative, you folks, the tentative draft that the Bike Ped Commission worked on when we get to this point. Item number three, so explore, explore adopting an electric vehicle-ready ordinance. So provide some background in here. Municipality used to be, used to be able to require the installation or the creation of electric vehicle, electric vehicle parking stations. Because of 2023 Act 121, we are now prohibited from, as municipality, from doing so. Communities since 2023, as a way to circumvent Act 121, what they did is adopt an EV-ready ordinance, saying you as a property owner, as a developer, would be required to install the electrical conduit underneath the parking lot as part of a parking lot project. And then the remaining 20%, spitballing a number, obviously, but the remaining 20% would be done either at some, would be completed either at some point in the future when that business wants to provide those accommodations for their customers or employees, or that would kind of push that developer, property owner, to fulfill that remaining 20% as part of the overall development. The, really, the big question for, or the big thing for you folks to consider, to think about in the months ahead is, should this be a requirement, or should this be more of a, an incentive? Should you incentivize development to provide these accommodations and doing, and by doing so, provide some reductions, say, some reductions in building setback requirements or max height allowances, et cetera? Or do you require it either across the city or in select targeted areas of the city? So really, care-to-stick approach, what approach do you want to take? This is, I mean, this, overall, the, the public dialogue that I've had, there's definitely an interest in having an EV-ready ordinance in place. It's just a matter of what approach? That's the area where there's been some discrepancy, some non-consensus provided. Again, just something to think about. Item number four, this is probably going to be the one that's going to require the most conversation and work along the way, and that's looking at how we require off-street parking. So the first set of bullet points are parking reductions that are already built into the city's zoning code. The one that's used the most common, that's used most commonly, is that first bullet point. So development that's within a quarter mile of a bus stop, I automatically shave off 15% of the required parking that's needed. The other ones, they're used less frequently, but it happens. It comes up from time to time. Then the second chunk is bullet point, the second chunk, those bullet points are certain strategies that communities have taken to address off-street parking requirements. What I'll say, and this is something that honestly pleased me in these neighborhood meetings throughout the, the spring, summer, and early fall, is that obviously, parking is a divisive conversation at times. And what I was really happy with is that attendees at these neighborhood meetings, they thought very critically about the current offerings of parking based off of land use and what's working and what's not working so well, so well. And generally speaking, residents felt that for multifamily development, there's not enough parking that's being provided based off of recent developments. Contrary, when we look at existing and more recent commercial and industrial developments, the average opinion swings, swings in the opposite direction, that there tends to be an overabundance of parking that's provided. That's something that pleasantly, that gave me a sense of comfortability and that people could, people could see, people could understand that their opinions differ based off of land use. They're not providing this overall generic statement of we have too much parking or we have too little parking and not thinking critically by specific land use and development patterns. Joe?
You know, as planners, we like to try to find standards that are somehow based on empirical data so that we can have some level of comfort that they represent reality. I know that previously, it was the Institute of Traffic Engineers.
Yeah.
For years, you know, they generated every type of parking need there was. So what, if we don't use them, what type of empirical data can inform adjustments to the requirements? Has ITE changed, or are we on our own with this?
I, if you folks are not comfortable with the aforementioned, I guess, policy book, it'd really be on our own using.
Okay. Well, I, I just, I like it as a base and somehow tempered with local experience, right? Because the people do have a lot of opinions about what works and what doesn't. But it's just not something that we just want to randomly make up. And I don't mean that in a, you know, negative way. We wouldn't, but you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's always good to have data you can fall back on and say, okay, this has historically been, and then modify it based on, on local experience.
Yeah, and thankfully, there's been enough developments recently for each one of those broad land use categories, multifamily, commercial, industrial, that we could glean on, you know, look at, peak traffic times, let's just say, for an average multifamily development, and see what percentage of the parking lot's being covered with, have those parking spaces be utilized at that given time.
Yeah, but short, we can always add a deck.
Yeah, yeah. Mike?
Yeah, I would agree that parking is divisive in this community, but I think it's the divisiveness that's the problem, not the, the topic itself. I've said this before, but, you know, the downtown, North Division corridor, the, the history of this, when you go back a decade, almost exactly a decade, the city had two developments. I believe at that time, it was Point Motel and a Lullaby Site. And so parking needed to change for those two developments to go through. So I believe Plan Commission shot them down. They got to council. Parking was first on the agenda, and they changed parking. So our parking, I would argue, used to be more restrictive, too restrictive. And we went the opposite way. And so we changed the parking ordinance. The two developments got shot down, but for the last decade, we've been stuck with this policy. And so, you know, I don't think we engage SPPD in these conversations enough. They deal with this. They were leery about the, the second project on Division. They deal with, you know, what we have over in downtown with the new development there. And ultimately, and this is just the cynic in me, parking is an obstacle to getting development done. So I look at it as, well, it's an obstacle, so we reduce parking to get the development, and then when there's a problem, we just deal with it later. In 15, in the, in the 10 years since then, we haven't seen fewer cars. We've got people that come to these meetings and talk about parking, and it's going away, and everybody's walking. But we've seen more cars on campus than the same number of cars of the last 10 years, and we've shrunk our parking requirements for the sake of getting new development. We still have the same number of cars. And so we're in a climate where people drive to the grocery store. I don't buy that if you're a quarter mile to the bus stop, you're going to start taking the bus. I just feel like we have to find out how many cars, how people use them, and then what we need. And we went away from standards to be lenient to get deals done. I, I don't think the usage's changed. I don't think the need has gone away. And I agree with, with Commissioner Shuler on this. I don't care how it turns out, I just want good data. I don't care what Portland is doing. I don't care what, you know, what we think is going to happen 20 years from now. I just want good data for now that we can build policy around so when we have a development, it has adequate parking, and they're not depending on four blocks around them that they can park in on the street because they don't have enough.
Yeah, and this is a good segue. I'm going to mention this a little bit later, but I can say it now. As we get through the months ahead, not only am I going to be presenting these draft code sections for you folks for review, I do plan to have staggered guest speakers come to you folks, virtually or in person, and talk about the specific policy area of focus. Currently working with someone addressing missing middle housing, another one on urban design, a third one focusing on traffic demand management, and really, because of the context of how do we calculate the expected demand for traffic based off, the expected traffic demand based off of specific land uses? So I think that would be a helpful presentation when that individual does come here to present. So, and I'll add too. Obviously, there's, there's a number of communities here in the state that are actively or just recently rewritten their zoning codes. One of the things that's been surprising in my deep dive of their code rewrite processes is that a majority of these communities identified parking requirements for multifamily development of being an issue in the past. Specifically, so eliminating minimum off-street parking requirements for commercial uses in the downtown, but not for multifamily development. The City of Eau Claire just adopted their zoning code as of, I think, October 1st, and that's something that was built into their code for the downtown because that was an issue in their community for multifamily development. So the fact that, you know, in a way, I'm heartened to know that this, the issues and the concerns that folks are raising here in Point, it's not like we're standalone. You know, those are similar issues other communities across the state are experiencing too. Like I said, more to come on that one. Number five, so consider requiring the submission of a traffic impact analysis as part of certain development applications. Really getting to the guidance that would be, that's needed for staff to say, what types of developments do you, as a Plan Commission, want to see some sort of TIA, traffic impact analysis submitted as part of your, as part of your commission duties? Typically, if you have a development that's close to Interstate 39 and there are interchanges, they're going to be required by the state DOT to provide a traffic impact analysis anyways. But the whole scope of this policy recommendation is to better align specific development scenarios that you, as a commission and the council, would want to see that TIA submitted.
I get, that was one of my questions. Are there different levels of analysis that might be considered appropriate based on individual project scope? And is there a way to somehow define that in the code itself? Or is that a, an operating procedure or an internal list of, okay, you have to figure out what the intensity of the project is that would kick in, whatever level of? Because I think, if you think about it, just generally speaking, having a traffic impact analysis is duh, right? You want to know exactly how this type of development will impact the neighborhood. I guess, looking at, and we did have a traffic impact analysis for HH and Hoover. But that was an obvious place where there was a, a street opening that might have to be closed and totally unknown what two-thirds of the site could possibly be with no plans for it, kind of a thing. So I don't know how that would factor into what you would require someone to submit, but any thinking you could do on that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, it could be built really either, either way, built into the code itself or as part of a, you know, a form as part of an application. You know, I'm thinking, just kind of thinking aloud, I think one area where it would be more appropriate for this is if somebody's seeking a, a plan development rezoning for lot density, a lot density adjustment. You know, a lot of the plan development, plan development projects over the years tended to ask for an exception to density requirements. I think that on the aggregate could be a reasonable type of, a type of project where a TIA ought to be considered.
And I think that transportation, Transportation Policy A4.2 that you referenced gives you all of the leeway you need to however you want to flesh out that idea. It's, it's, the basis for it is that policy, so.
Yeah. Okay. So number six says, update the city's landscaping guidelines. This is quite the riveting section, but basically, providing some more guidance as to the quantity, the types of species, the certain types of materials that are allowed. You know, generally speaking, what we have in our current land use ordinances, any landscaping material that's planted has to be drought tolerant, salt tolerant. material that's planted has to be drought tolerant, salt tolerant, and then there's some specific height and canopy spread requirements at the time of planting and immaturity for trees. So I think this is really getting at, providing some more specificity for me as staff to know what type of landscaping plan, when a landscaping plan is being submitted, does it actually meet the intentions of what you folks are trying to achieve for a uniform parking lot?
Do the business park, deed restrictions and protective covenants offer any insight into that, or is that more parallel to what you do now?
I am not as familiar with the landscaping rights, the DRCs.
Okay.
Just for the sake of urban heat sinks, the larger the parking lot, perhaps the more trees one should require. I mean, these vast spaces with nothing but dark asphalt just soak up all the sun and radiate it right back all night long, creates microclimates. I don't know if you do it by square feet or if you want to do something like that, but it seems to me the more trees you can have in a big parking lot, the better you're going to be in the long run, as long as they're maintained. I don't know how you force maintenance, but you know, when the shrubs die and you've got long expanses of warehouse walls, could use some softening up as well with some, things like that, but yeah.
And then item number seven is relatively similar. So in our ordinance right now, we say, hey, when you have a rural parking, it has to be encapsulated by a landscaped island. It doesn't specify, for starters, the length of a rural parking that would warrant the need for either perimeter landscaping or internal landscaped islands. Generally, my rule of thumb is if you have more than six, then that's what triggered it, and less than that, no. But adding some clarity on that, and then also, what are the minimum design standards for landscaped islands? I'm thinking specifically for perimeter landscaping, which tends to be more common of a practice for snow clearing, just as a benefit for snow clearing, you don't have to mess around with as much internal islands at all, but adding some specificity as to what size those landscaped areas ought to be. Okay. And then the next section, so this is more on the environmental side of things. Number one would, this is kind of similar as well, so incentivize native plantings when meeting minimum landscaping requirements. So building, building into our landscaping ordinance, the incentive that if you provide, or either the encouragement or requirement, up to you folks, but that certain native planting species are incorporated as part of those landscaped areas.
And I see that you mentioned reducing minimum off-street parking requirements. And then my only question, as I was going through this, reading it the first time, is, is required parking numbers really as flexible as the public opinion makes it out to be? Rhetorical, based on our previous conversation as well, right?
Yeah.
And I guess should pavement setbacks be variable as an incentive, or should they simply be reexamined as a rule?
Both, I would say. And the reason I say there should be an examination of pavement setback requirements. So for all of our commercial and industrial zoning districts, we require a five-foot pavement setback from all outlines. When you have smaller, smaller commercial lots that are looking to be developed, there's instances, there is situations that arose where there's not adequate space to direct stormwater flow, so there's stormwater retention on the site. Five feet really doesn't do much. So that's one area, yeah, that's one area where I want to look at it and see, is five feet actually enough, or should we bump that up a little bit?
I just have one rhetorical comment about native plantings. Landscaping, it's generally about aesthetics and screening, right, for a parking lot?
Yes.
And can native plantings effectively accomplish both? Again, rhetorical. So as you look at that, you know, and you think about species types and situational lists of plantings, if the stated goal is to screen a parking lot, what can you require that would accomplish that?
I mean, with drought and salt tolerant, what about disease? I mean, you're not going to let somebody plant a bunch of ash trees. So, I mean, can you, what are the limitations in this?
Technically, there's nothing regarding that. If somebody would want to propose planting ash trees in a landscaping plan, there's nothing in the ordinance that would allow me to prohibit that.
No.
So, which is a great point, there should be something in there.
Well, I was going to say, following up on that is that if we don't recommend them, could we list prohibited species, things that you can't do?
You could, I guess.
Takes a level of expertise, though.
Yeah, something that I surely don't have. Unless I hear what you folks do.
There's probably enough expertise around to come up with a list of things you don't want. Look at the DNR list of prohibited or limited species, and I don't know if that's inherently involved, but you know, you don't want them to go plant buckthorn or autumn olive or things like those that people could. I mean, I don't know why they would, but give them a chance.
Yeah, get a deal on it somewhere.
They grow well, right? They make a good border for your screening.
I wouldn't think it'd be too hard. City Forester can come up with a list of trees that the city's been planting based on conditions and.
Well, and every tree's got something that attacks it.
Insects and things and.
But diversity is the key there.
There's the Portage County Master Gardeners, UW Extension. It wouldn't be hard to get a list of both noxious weeds that are illegal, like Canada thistle, and choose from these. These are three feet tall, these are four feet tall, these are eight feet tall, these are native species that should thrive in your development, choose from this list.
I see Turner Beverage submitted a comment saying that state law, there's the state law on prohibited species applies here whether we include it in the zoning code or not.
I know there's, we've got some.
Have to look at what the state explicitly says.
Yeah, that list isn't as extensive as you might like, but right, no, that would be good, and there may be others to add to it that, right, forestry, gardeners, you know, folks can comment on.
Okay. Item number two, so adopta impervious surface ordinance. This is really intended more for stormwater management, where there's regulation as to the percentage of a lot that could be covered with buildings and hardscape. The intention of this is to not apply this across the board on every single property here in the city, more in areas where there are stormwater issues, like your, maybe your flood fringe areas and areas with a high water table.
Well, I was wondering if high water table is a legit limiter, and shouldn't it be more based on the type of development itself?
I guess expand on that.
High water is going to be in certain parts of the city, but the concern is probably, if you're talking about stormwater, it's how much of a lot can be used to.
Infiltrate.
Infiltrate, right? And so I think it's based on the intensity of use on a site and your desire to make sure that infiltration is possible. That's why, like, in the business park, it's 50% open space on the southern part of the park, and I think it's 35% open space on the northern part of the park, something like that.
Is there a reason why there's a difference between the northern and the southern?
More industrial, so.
Okay, so it's by the land use sense.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the southern half was aesthetics, right? They wanted to have a jewel of a business park, so they required 50% open space, and most of the people bought out there, did so, but really, they wished they could do more with their, with their sites than have 50% open space. And it's all onsite drainage out there, so that was, I mean, part of it, right? But so I've been looking forward to how that evolves, because I think as a policy, it's good, it just, where and how you apply it. And I just don't know if just the high water areas is the horse of peace for logic on it.
Well, and yes, I think it's good too. I'm a big fan of limiting impervious surfaces. Stormwater's a big one, but there are other benefits, ancillary benefits. Mary's comment about, you know, just climate moderation, temperature control, water control, microclimates have advantages, and then the vegetation itself can be aesthetic and recreational too. I mean, I don't know that we want to quantify all these things, but I think there's more to the impervious surface ordinance than just stormwater, although stormwater is probably a legislatively driven one.
Yeah. Okay. So item number three, this is pertaining to the use of gravel and granite for driveways. So currently, there's a few conditions built into the ordinance that property owners have to adhere by for creating gravel and granite driveways. That would be setback, additional setback requirements, the minimum thickness requirements for gravel and granite, edging requirement. And then the last one would be the need for underlayment matting or a grid foundation stabilizer. Effectively, the purpose of that is so that ruts don't form over time. And I guess just, in my opinion, there's not necessarily the need to place that as a requirement in a driveway ordinance. Obviously, it would be a smart idea if property owners do, just in terms of maximizing the longevity of a gravel driveway, but ought it to be a requirement per se? In my opinion, no. The other items, requiring additional setback, requiring edging, that makes sense, so you ensure that the gravel stones, for example, that they're better contained within the driveway space and doesn't permeate to the street or an adjacent lot.
Does ordinance enforcement have this as far as you get dead spots? And you know, gravel driveways are maintenance, so is that fall under ordinance?
So you're talking enforcement, like, a year, two, three after a gravel driveway is created, do I go out and ensure that?
I'm just, I'm just saying, so I have a couple, and every so often, you got to pour new granite, and so that's a mess, and you do have spill over onto sidewalks and things. Does that fall under your ordinance enforcement when those things happen?
I would consider that more just general maintenance, where you wouldn't require a permit, you wouldn't.
I just mean, does your ordinance enforcement officer go out there and say, you better fill in the dead spots in your, or you're going to have to take care of the issue that's spilling out in the sidewalk?
Not that I know of.
Okay. You're safe for another year.
All right. And then the last one, so refine the city's shoreline, wetland, floodplain regulations to comply with state standard. I'll just leave it short and sweet, there is enough updates that are needed, and this is an example where we're, we're limited to what the state says we have to use for ordinance language, so it's just meant to be more consistent with that. All right, site design. So first one, so establish screening requirements for mechanical equipment for multifamily and non-residential land uses. So this is always a condition for CUP site planner review requests before this body's saying mechanical equipment has to be screened from public view. However, it doesn't specify the preferred types of screening material, and then what are some of the specifications if landscaping is used and if fencing is used? How tall does the fence panels have to be? Is there a minimum for landscaping? Is there a certain type of landscaping that is preferred or required? So this is just adding some more teeth, more specificity to the overall concept.
So I was curious where the findings of fact would be to provide the basis for that? Is that probably something that needs to be in the comp plan? So that, because you're talking about formalizing this into the actual code as opposed to making it a part of a conditional use review, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know, that would be something to maybe keep an eye on, is where is that mentioned in your comp plan, that it is important to screen mechanicals or incompatible uses?
And I guess I will say, I don't see a need to remove the screening, the desire for screening as part of a review standard for CUP requests. You could build it into the review standard itself instead of building it into the code.
Okay.
But I agree your point, I agree with your point, if it is built into the code, including in the comp plan. So similar item for item number two, address screening requirements between incompatible land uses. Obviously, this is few and far between that this occurs, a commercial use next to a single-family use, for example, but what is the desired type of screening and the specifications for that? You know, I know this body kind of went in a back and forth conversation when the tsunami car wash was proposed on the east side of town, I don't know, a year, 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 year and a half ago or so. So just adding some specificity so it'd be easier for I as staff to know what's actually required before it gets before your, gets before your eyes. So item number three then is retain the ability for myself to grant minor amendments to parking lot design standards. This is honestly something that's been like a saving grace for parking lot projects. There's certain, certain scenarios that have to be met in order for myself to invoke what's called this constrained site designation, but essentially, this allows me to grant administrative variances from parking lot and landscaping standards. What I will say is there's certain parking lot features that no way, no how am I ever going to grant the exception, case in point, the amount of accessible parking stalls that are required. Not going to deviate from that. Really, the areas that I do grant exceptions would be pavement setbacks, aisle widths. You know, aisle widths, we require 16 feet for one-way traffic, 22 feet for two-way traffic. That's probably a little bit more than what's generally needed, so those would typically be the areas. But basically, building, retaining this in our new code, because that's used a lot. There's a lot of non-residential units, non-residential uses that are located on a small lot that it would be hard to meet both off-street parking requirements and these design requirements for parking lots. So maintaining the status quo. And then lastly, number four, so amend regulations for privacy fencing located near an alley. So currently, so privacy fencing that exceeds three feet in height is required to be setback 10 feet from both the street lot line and the alley lot line, alley right-of-way lot line. If you drive past town, probably a good 90% plus of lots have fences that are right up to the alley lot line. And I can't tell you why that's a rule, my hunch is it's just more aesthetics, so you're not driving down a tunnel if you're driving, driving through an alley, but I think this is really meant to achieve more conformity with what's existing right now.
So if it were switched to either reduced or on the alley line, what type of flexibility would you have? I mean, some circumstances may exist where having it there, if it's a new fence, it's just a really bad idea, so what ability would you have to say no?
Right now, or if this policy is?
If the policy was put it right up to the alley line or some sort of reduced setback.
So vision triangles would still come into play. If you have a, I mean, driveways tend to have access off the alley, that is something that I'm going to vehement and say, we're going to retain that vision triangle requirement. So that would be one scenario where.
Good.
That would take precedent, both for visibility off the driveways and for street intersections.
Thank you.
All right, so zoning map. So zoning map, I'm again, zoning map. As I mentioned before, this is fluid. This is gonna be based, I mean, there's a lot of questions that are gonna be, that are going to have to be answered along the way as far as the quantity of different zoning districts, how much overlay districts we're gonna have. You know, I think the big thing that's gonna be of work on my end is how many residential zoning districts do we want slash need to have? There, for example, City of Middleton, they adopted their zoning code a year, year and a half ago, and they have about a dozen different residential zoning districts. I think that's a little overkill. There's other communities that have like four or five, similar to what we have now. So that's gonna be kind of the onus on me is to better understand what is that sweet spot for number. But really, overall concept for zoning map, I'm gonna lump the first two together. Establish park zoning district, institutional zoning district, and an agricultural zoning district. Most communities do have these. We are the anomaly. Number four, really consolidate repetitive zoning districts that are not widely used. We have two multifamily zoning districts already. When they have basically the same development standards, there really isn't a need for having two of the same.
So, I mean, for B2 and R5, is that a pretty easy transition? So if you dump those in where those exist now, is that an easy transition or something else?
Not necessarily. I mean, so B2 would be like Northside Yard, Great Northern.
And that, is that the only one? What else is B2?
That's really it. So the intent of the B2 district is to serve as a transition away from the downtown.
Got it.
And I wouldn't necessarily call Northside Yard and the intensity that is Northside Yard as a transition away from the intensity of the downtown towards the residential areas.
More of a barrier, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I just had one, as I looked at that, a rhetorical statement of need to make sure that all possible future versions of business and residential development are accounted for in the districts and make sure there's no nuance left unaccounted for. And I know you're gonna do that, but I just had to say it out loud.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Oh, yes? You really have to go to the podium and then state your name and address.
Nathan Sandwick, 633 Portage Street. I just wanted, well, there's a lot that I want to say tonight, but on that item number four in particular, I wanted to flag it as problematic. It's not, to me, doesn't seem to have a clear purpose. I can speak to one example where I live, being an R5 one, that makes a lot of sense to me, as is. And I would oppose just absorbing it or whatever that means into another zoning district for no clear reason. That's it. I've got a lot more to say in general, but that's on item number four there.
Appreciate it. So item number five then is to align existing neighborhood commercial land uses under a neighborhood commercial zoning district. We have a neighborhood business zoning district that is really not utilized much at all. Really, some of the lots along Second Street, once you get north of downtown, and that's primarily it. So just better utilizing that as a zoning district. Item number six, and this is kind of loosely tied, not only to this topic, but another housing topic area and some others. But so establish some infill residential development standards to ensure that new construction does not negatively impact the existing neighborhood. I guess the best way to explain it is residents, they understand the need that when infill development opportunities exist, that there is going to be a need for a gentle density approach, a slightly different density of development for infill development relative to that surrounding area. What is a greater concern is how does that development align, mesh with the neighborhood that exists around it?
Fourth Avenue and Frederick? Sorry. For example?
I mean, that was one, I mean, that's a planned development district now, so it's a little different. But I mean, that was, that was.
And its purpose is infill, and it looks like it does.
Yeah. So this is, so I gave the example of City of Oakland. So they included those design standards and the bullet points as ways to ensure that new develop, new infill development is still copacetic with the surrounding area. So this is more site layout and then building, some building requirements as well. So this is really taking a look at when infill development occurs, possibly explore some of these as ordinance language.
So your gentle density, you're talking about perhaps expanded mass of an infill, but still trying to incorporate it into the kind of the texture of the neighborhood?
Correct. Yeah. Okay. Near and the end, I promise you, at least for this one. All right. Signs and subdivisions, your most favorite things. So number one, so adopt a new sign code that is re-compliant. I think you folks have heard me say in the past, Supreme Court case back in 2015 says that municipalities have to have a content neutral sign code and not a content-based sign code. We have a content-based sign code that is in need of amending to be re-compliant. So as part of this, CORE right will look to make it re-compliant. Number two, so consider sign bonuses for non-residential land uses along Interstate 39. This is a common thread I've seen from communities in the state that have an interstate, that have an interstate run through their community where they've allowed increased height and size allowance for allowances for freestanding signs. Typically, in those communities, they've done that by way of a special overlay district. I don't necessarily, at this time at least, I don't see a need for that because we're just talking about signage. I don't, we're not really talking about other means of development standards, building setbacks, et cetera.
We've done that before by granting variances or exceptions.
Yeah.
That's the process we have now. So we can do it. You're looking to just.
Build it in the code to reduce.
Right. So we don't have to debate those things.
Correct.
Recognize the situation and regulate accordingly.
I don't think they were too controversial, just going through the details, what they're asking for, what the limits are.
Yeah. And I think that's, I mean, I guess professional opinion, it seems reasonable, especially for the height allowance, to have a taller freestanding sign because Interstate 39 tends to be, is built up relative to the lots on either side of the interstate.
Is there a safety aspect? Does the size have to be a certain size? Like, you can't have a bunch of little writing and guys squinting at it as they're driving by. So is that a, or is that a highway standard?
I mean, it's not, it's not a standard on our end. I don't believe it really is through WISDOT. I think that's more of a standard for sign companies.
Right. I don't know if that's a highway sign company baseline.
Yeah. All right. So item number three, so encourage projecting signs within pedestrian-oriented developments. So we have some signage regulations for projecting signs within the downtown. Anywhere else, we don't have tiddly squat as far as what size is too big, the height from grade that's required. And I think we all know there's areas outside of the downtown that still has more of a pedestrian-oriented feel to it. So this is really looking to establish some, some meat on the bones for those areas. Item number four, so adopt some landscaping requirements for the installation of new freestanding signs. We have this already within the B5 Highway Commercial District. These would be lots along Highway 10 east of the interchange. This is looking to expand that to additional parts of town or city beautification project. So switching gears to subdivision stuff, number five, incorporate cluster subdivision design standards in the city subdivision ordinance. So cluster development, cluster subdivision development included in the packet is when residential lots are grouped together on a portion of a development pad to preserve the remainder of the lot as open space. There's some areas of town as part of infill development, and when we look outside, outside of the city's corporate boundary that could be annexed into the future, there are areas that are heavily wooded. And I think it would be helpful for us to have some sort of verbiage on cluster subdivision development and better encourage that as a practice for the planning of land.
Is that similar to the cottage-style development?
That's what I was wondering as well.
Potentially, it would depend on if, say, in a cottage cluster development, if they utilize the existing green space as their, kind of their gathering space. You don't necessarily have to in a cluster development. You could just identify that as undevelopable, as non-developable, and leave it at that. I guess it's really, it's really intended on the purpose, up to the purpose of that.
All right. Good, thanks.
And then the last one, so identify in the subdivision ordinance when sidewalks and multi-use paths are preferred. And this has been a conversation myself and Director Badun have had a few times now over, especially as of late, is there seems to have, there seems to have been a shift over the last couple of years of the city prioritizing multi-use paths to be installed for new development. And myself, Director Badun, we're more looking at some guidance as to in what development scenarios would you rather see multi-use paths be installed versus sidewalks and vice versa? So we've kind of, we've kind of shifted back and forth over the years and providing some guidance.
Kind of like an urban versus a rural cross-section in terms of right-of-way and road construction, but you're looking for, trying to figure out what the, really the best circumstances are for the path versus the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I have a good example. We did a bike path on the sidewalk on Walter Street. The bike path was more to facilitate safe routes to school for Banneke Elementary. But now with the Plurva crossing coming through, that's gonna tie in and lead people further out toward the Hall Nature Reserve and Parkdale Park, the soccer fields. And frankly, more people are walking on the multi-use path than they are on the sidewalk across the street because it's a little bit wider and, but that, anything that would be close enough to tie into the Green Circle Trail in a new development, I think a multi-use path would be better because people, the kids are gonna ride their bikes on the sidewalks anyway. Or maybe a combination of both, depending on what the development looks like. But I think there's some opportunities for multi-use paths that would tie into existing trail systems or lead to a park.
And I will say, that is something that is being worked on. This whole conversation is also being worked on as part of the county bike path plan. Just kind of as a quick side note, at this time, it looks like either November, December, one of those two months, you'll be provided a copy of the draft plan for your consumption. So, yeah.
I was just gonna say, four, five, and six under signage and subdivision regs is the same as site design one and two. Just try to make sure that whatever comes forward in the comp plan, I know that they're probably covered under the existing goals, objectives, and policies, but whatever gets processed through to the new one, just make sure that the basis is still there for theirs.
For sure.
Thanks.
All right. The miscellaneous ones, I'm gonna lump number one, three, and four together. This is more administrative tasks. So number one, so identify scenarios where the zoning administrator can approve minor deviations from code requirements. We have some instances already. I mentioned the parking lot standards, some driveway width, minimum driveway width requirements. Obviously, we should use that sparingly, don't use that, allow that a lot, but just figure out scenarios where that ought to be an option. Item three, rewrite the city's non-conformity section. We are, to be frank, we're quite rigid in our non-conforming section. And one area that we could look at in, in terms of encouraging general maintenance onto our existing housing stock, to use it, use as an example, would be to rewrite the non-conforming section to loosen it up a little bit. And then lastly, update the definitions section. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. Segueing back to number two, this is something for you folks to consider going forward, is determine variance scenarios that should be considered by you folks in the council versus that of the zoning board of appeals. There's a number of variance proposals that would be subject to your review, sign variances, driveway variances, fence variances. Is that something? And this is also a conversation I'll be having with the zoning board of appeals too down the road, but what should be the, what should be the delineation of variance requests that are be brought before, that are brought before you folks versus that of the CBA?
And I guess I would look for a lot, strong guidance from the city attorney on, on what should change or might change on that.
Yeah.
Because it's hard for us to just kind of arbitrarily choose, I guess. Whatever's, like anything with this, you want property owners to understand what they can do with their land, and you want them to have a very clear process for getting things approved or variances granted. So whatever streamlines that, I think is, that's it I'm sure we'll be in favor of. Whatever makes.
Makes more sense.
Sense, yeah.
Okay. All right. And then the last section, and this is really the, the four bullet points are the ones where I want you folks to chew on it, think about it, and provide me guidance in the future, in the coming days, weeks, months. First one is frankly the most important one of the four, and that's the whole conversation of building design standards. This is really a proxy for saying, what structure of a zoning code do you, do we want? Do we want a Euclidean-based zoning code, a form-based zoning code, a hybrid-based form, a hybrid form-based code, more of an incentive or performance-based zoning code? This is really the area where I haven't received a lot of consensus from residents over the last several months. And fortunately, unfortunately for you folks, I'm gonna be putting it on you to provide me that guidance.
You ask for tracks, I'm going one and three, and I agree with the, the exercise.
Yeah.
So put me down for one, one and three. I don't know if anybody else has an opinion on that.
And obviously, I don't need an answer now. If you folks need to, if you folks want to think about it, shoot me an email.
That's okay, too.
So that's building design standards. Number two would be increased size allowances for accessory structures. Referenced earlier, 900 square feet is the maximum size that's allowed for accessory structures. I mentioned in here the data feedback for those that have, that want to see it increase versus those that want it to be kind of the same versus those who have a neutral standing.
I agree with it, and I would, I would tie it to lot size or impervious surface ratio.
Okay. And number three, so this is, I mean, this is gonna be the one where there's gonna be some tie-in with the comp plan, but idealize land use pattern along the corridors listed in the packet. So first being Church Street between the Canadian National Railway and Heffron Street.
What's on Heffron in that?
So that would be Quick Trip, or Quick Trip BP. I mean, our future land use map right now designates almost that area almost exclusively as commercial office, multifamily uses being the desired land uses along that corridor. What I'm looking at is when we apply this to the zoning map, what intensity of commercial development are you look, would you, would be deemed most appropriate? Are you thinking of more of a intensity of development as what exists south of Heffron? Looking at save a lot, looking at rookies downward? Do you want more of a, more of a softened intensity to serve as a buffer between kind of the residential uses once you get north of Belts? So something to think about for that corridor, second corridor being Pat Street between Church Street and McDill Pond. There is quite the, aha, quite the variation. It's, in terms of land use patterns, it's kind of a mess. You got a bunch of institutional, single-family, industrial, multifamily mixed in there.
Legacy stuff.
Yeah. And then the last one is River View Ave, County Road HH between the Wisconsin River and Hackodells. There is some developable land there. There is some developable land there. Some of it is held as part of flood purposes through the paper mill, but really, what's the vision for that corridor once you get really past Waterski going westward? That's number three. And then the last one is really talking about the resurfacing of non-conforming driveways and parking lots. And this has been another conversation myself and Director Badun have had a lot over the years. So as you folks know, an application of zoning says, we want to reduce the amount of nonconformities that exist over time through compliance with current ordinance language, right? For any other situation, if you have a building that's too close to the street, doesn't meet setback requirements, if somebody wants to tear down that building and build a new, you've got to meet current setbacks. Driveways are the one exception where you, property owners, are allowed to resurface a non-conforming driveway like-for-like, no ifs, ands, or buts. And really, the thing that I want you to think about is, is that a policy that you want to continue going forward? In one hand, I understand that because there's a lot that makes up our driveway code. It's many pages, a lot of ifs, ands, or buts, and it's hard for most driveways to be compliant with all those rules. Yet again, on the other hand, that kind of screams against the purpose of zoning anyways, of reducing nonconforming situations over time. So just something for you to think about. At the end here, I did include kind of current practice and how that may help or hinder your thought process, so. That is really everything that makes up the report. So there's going to be a lot more that we really didn't cover, specifically the zoning map considerations. We didn't obviously touch setback requirements, building height requirements, lot size minimums, all that. That will be its own separate beast down the road.
I'm just going to say it again that, yeah, good, go yes, based on this report, everything we talked about. There's nothing in there that requires any further follow-up at this time, so it's like a green light for me, whatever you need to do next steps.
Yeah.
And I know you put a ton of time into this, so appreciate that.
Much appreciated. Appreciate it. Pete, Matt, I guess, is there any concur, or are there any issues that you folks see, things that are missing?
No, I thought it was good. I went through it, I didn't get to that last section. That's what I was telling Jeff, but that's the one that you're looking for the most input on, but not necessarily this evening. But, right, I didn't have any big heartburn over any of these recommended changes, you know, maybe nitpick and things, native plants, I'm big on those, but impervious areas, I'm kind of down on those. But my record is clear on that, so no surprises.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I didn't have any specifically strong opinion. I mean, this is stuff that you deal with every day, so obviously, you've got a lot of perspective here. Yeah, I'm fine with kind of, yeah, taking next steps as staff sees fit.
Okay.
And thanks for bringing the discussion group stuff forward and the references and information in there. I feel like we know what you heard and we're able to move it forward, so.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Item number three on the agenda, discussion on project schedule, draft and refinement stage of the zoning code rewrite.
All right, so this one will be a quick one. Really just want to kind of give a 30,000-foot view of where we're going to go from here. I'll preface by saying, in the months ahead, it may feel, this process may feel a bit disjointed. And that's okay. That's probably going to happen because you're reviewing a lot of random, different code sections, and it's going to be hard at first to see how it meshes together into this overarching policy document. Bear with us, over time, you'll see the correlation. But basically, how, so the project schedule, out of the rough phases as part of this code rewrite is going to be, is shown on page 27 of the packet and on the screen here. I don't suggest you reading the screen because that's a very small print. Basically, though, first phase, first items we're going to be working on are the general standards. And these are going to be the code sections that either apply to most areas of the city regardless of how they're zoned. Think of fence code, fence standards, that, and code requirements where we're really mandated by the state, the feds, or the core system. Again, think your floodplain, your shoreline provisions. That is really intended to be this first phase because it's not going to take a lot of time, in all honesty, for some of these sections. It's going to be more fine tweaks from what's existing. I don't expect a lot of overarching, comprehensive changes to it. Hopefully, at least, but, so, that should be relatively, relatively quick phase, but that's intentional because this second phase, so the creation of the zoning map, is going to be quite the lengthy process. So how I'm going to embark on this phase is get an understanding of the zoning, the proposed zoning districts, establish the purpose statements for each of those zoning districts, put it on a map, and then seek your feedback and the public's feedback. That's, I'm intentionally not including the development regulations for those proposed zoning districts. One, because that's a lot to swallow, that's a lot to take in. And two, it can become personal real quick to know, does my lot, does this lot, does that lot, am I going to be compliant? Are these the type of, these are the type of land uses that are proposed in my neighborhood? Is that, do I want that, yes or no? I want to take this in more small, digestible chunks, so. Understanding first and foremost how many zoning districts we want, how many, the different types of overlay districts that we want, and then apply that onto the map. There's a lot of overlay districts that we have right now, and there'll probably be more, but that's going to be a lot right then and there. So that's the first step. I want you to get some general consensus on applying the purpose statement to the zoning district and making sure that's in alignment with the built environment in that area. Then it will be working on the performance standards for each of those districts. So that's item number three. Item number four, so that's going to be all your, the access and mobility standards, that's going to be your driveways, parking, landscaping, bicycling, bicycle parking. Obviously, the off-street parking section is going to be, is going to warrant a lot of conversation, so. And these are the sections that really I'm going to need the zoning districts to be finalized first before we talk about pavement setback requirements for certain areas of town. Five, six, five and six, we're going to kind of shift gears away from zoning towards sign and subdivision standards. Item number seven then will be the review standards. We touched on that a few months ago, so codifying the review standards for all the action, all the things that you as a commission have to consider. And then lastly, item number eight would be more of the administrative procedures. So what is my role as the zoning administrator? What's the process for variances and administrative appeals, nonconformity sections, the definitions, kind of wrapping it all up and putting the bow on top. It's almost Christmas.
Yes. So I'm thinking that under Phase One General Standards, the Subpoint General Development Standards, that's where we were sort of talking about the opportunity to lay out the different types of review that staff will automatically do for each type of development. Okay.
Yep.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah. So that, I guess, questions, comments, concerns? Otherwise, that's really all that I have for this one.
Looks good. Anybody else? We can move on to number four, first review of draft purpose statements, zoning, sign, and subdivision ordinances.
All right, so purpose statements, those are the, really the, backtrack, before I get to that. So the months ahead, as I mentioned, we're going to be presenting draft code sections to you for consumption. How I'm going to present it to you in the packet is really going to be based off of what level of changes are being proposed. If it's going to be more fine tweaks along the edges, what my plan is to just redline the existing document and include that in the packet, send it over to you. If there's code sections that's existing that I'm just going to start from scratch because it needs to, kind of like this purpose statement item, I'm going to include what's the existing section and then the proposed section back-to-back, just so at least you can see the similarities and differences between the two. And then third, there's going to be some code provisions that you'll be reviewing that it's brand spanking new, that'll kind of just be left alone by itself. So for this one, purpose statements, this is always typically the first or one of the first sections of any code of ordinances. And really, the scope of this is to explain the why of why do we have this code to begin with? What is it looking to achieve? What's its intentions? And at least for the purpose of zoning, there are some explanations outlined in state stats. That'd be the first chunk of text included on the slide deck here and in the packet. But beyond that, ultimately, what is included in a purpose statement is up to each municipality. It really covers your ideals of what you're trying to achieve. So the purpose, kind of the intentions that I had as part of rewriting these purpose statements are included in the packet and on the screen. First is to make it more visually appealing. I'm going to look especially at the subdivision code. So the page 32, there is no reason that you should have a paragraph that takes like three-quarters of a page. I know this is not tied to zoning, but like, this is a monstrosity.
I liked that the one sentence was 14 lines long.
What was that?
There's one sentence that's 14 lines long, I appreciated that.
We liked our run-on sentences. So that is a support. I mean, visually, so making it a little bit more visually appealing. Number two is eliminate redundancy. There's a lot of the, a lot of what's existing that it's two of the same, it's just reworded differently. We don't need to reiterate the same thing over and over again. And then number three is to eliminate statement areas where we're obligated statutorily to achieve. You know, there's, I think the example I gave is the preservation of burial sites. We have to achieve that regardless, we have to adhere to that statute regardless of if we include it in the purpose statement or not. So just, in my opinion, it seems redundant to include it in there. So before I kick it back to the group for conversation, what I'll say is, what will be helpful for me in the months ahead is, there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of text that you're going to be reviewing. I'm assuming you're going to be editing this either on a sheet of paper or on your computer. Send that to me, send me your comments before, after the meeting. That helps me a lot instead of trying to disseminate the wordsmithing, the commentary that you're providing during the meeting, so. If you have any comments now, obviously, you can bring it up, but also if you could provide those written commentary to me.
So obviously, the downloadable packet's PDF, but we can get Word doc, or do you have a shared doc?
Um, well, so, I can't, well, I guess, start. So it's a PDF, I mean, it's editable PDF, so you could add comments.
We want it done on that versus within like track.
I mean, you can convert it, I mean, you can convert it to Word, the PDF to Word, and then, yeah. Definitely, I can't create a, I guess, a shared folder.
You are asking for a nightmare, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Just a nightmare.
Open meeting law, probably issues there, but.
I'm talking about asking everybody to edit this separately.
Yeah.
You're nuts, but okay.
Yeah. I'm a crazy child, so. So, yeah, send me your comments, just going forward, before, after the meeting, whatever.
I just do have some comments on it now.
Yeah, but yeah, now, kick it back to the floor. Any comments for, we'll start with the zoning one first, just in sequential order.
Yeah, I just want to get this out of the way so everybody hears and they can agree or not agree, right? So yay to the rewrite. I was just curious, though, do you have to indicate that it's within the corporate boundaries of the city? The original one said of this community, and I didn't know if there was any other place in the document that was going to specify that it was for this corporate city of Stevens Point.
Which item, which number is that?
The very opening, out of the gate for zoning. The original has general warfare of this community. The proposed one just says, the purpose of this chapter is to do all these things, but it doesn't say, who are you doing it for?
Okay. I see what you're saying.
So at some point, the document's going to specify it's the corporate limits or the, the city of Stevens Point.
Yeah, I'd have to, I mean, and this would be a question I'd have to talk to Attorney Beveridge at some point in the future, is, I mean, there'll be the authority section of the code basically saying, like, hey, we as a community, as ordained in state's debt, blah, 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 blah.
I assume it's going to be somewhere, I just wanted to say that it previously was there.
Yeah, I always want to see if that's sufficient, if I, or if I need to include the corporate boundary language in this section, too. Okay, my question. Okay, any other feedback?
For the zoning?
For the zoning, yes. I'll say too, for all these going forward, don't be afraid to rip it to shreds, you ain't going to hurt my feelings, so. And if you think that it looks wonderful, then cool, but. All right, I guess if not with any zoning code ones, we can move on to the sign code.
The purpose of this chapter is to adopt standards for the fabrication, erection, and use of signs, too.
Yes.
I think instead of how the sign is built, you're probably talking about where the sign is located. So would location be better than erection? Or does it actually go in and talk about the fabrication of the sign?
Well.
I get your point.
Yeah.
But.
Um, I guess you could say, I mean, most sign codes say you can't, you can have a scrolling sign, but you can't have a flashing sign, right? I could make the argument that that talks more about the, more of the creation, the construction of the sign itself versus that of.
Okay, but the nuts and bolts of the code are, where can you put it? How big can it be?
Yeah, that, and probably the one area most applicable to the construction piece is, so the definition of what's considered the sign area. So like, if you have a, if you have a ground sign, that the sign area is only, you only count it if it's enclosed, if the sign on a ground sign is enclosed within a cabinet, you only calculate the dimensions of the cabinet for determining what the sign area is. That's kind of where it gets to the weeds of the actual construction of the sign versus that of kind of location.
Well, it's not the construction of the sign, it's the layout of the sign.
The layout, yeah.
Right. It's, I think.
I'm fine for using locations of.
I would recommend it, I don't know what anybody else is thinking, but.
That's fine.
Again, point taken.
Obviously, you'll see through this one and the other two, most of these are utilizing the existing purpose statements, or purpose statements from the existing section, it's just refining and consolidating. And if there's no, no comments for the sign code one, then the last one will be the subdivision code one, and this is where there's been a lot of refinement, clearly.
Yeah, they just have, you know, that lines two through 16 or whatever, they have like 15 different things in there that they're mentioning.
Yeah.
And then even more so between that and the last eight or whatever lines of, 10 lines of the thing. And I noticed that things like, well, lessen congestion might be in there, but lessen congestion, prevent the overcrowding of land, facilitate the further re-subdivision of larger tracts into smaller parcels, encourage orderly development through appropriate growth management techniques, assuring the timing and sequencing of development to assure proper urban form and space, open space, protect areas of premature urban development, ensure that public facilities and services are available concurrent with development and have sufficient capacity, conserving. conserving the value of buildings, providing the best possible environment for human habitation, encouraging the most appropriate use of land, provide generous distances between building sites and existing industries in terms of residential, and also between building sites and high-capacity streets to act as buffers against noise and noxious fumes. All good points, maybe not necessary, but is there any value to there being there in the first case, and is there any desire to incorporate any of those into the new one? You know what I mean? It was fairly expansive and specific. And if you're looking for intent to really help you establish what you think is right or allowable in a district, you certainly had plenty of detail in that. And again, I don't think they all need to be in there, but I'm wondering why maybe they weren't.
Yeah, my thought process was, it's kind of already covered, and primarily the zoning code when we're talking about, I forgot the exact word choice, but highest and best use of land, making sure some of the separation between surrounding land uses is kind of already established in.
True, but if you, if you're going to subdivide land, you're going to the subdivision code as the things that are gonna guide you, and is it not a bad place to be redundant if you're taking your direction for the active subdivision from that intent?
It can be.
That's my only point. Again, I don't think it needs to be the original one, but I just, there's a lot of good stuff in there. Old guys like old, good stuff, you know? Hate to see things thrown out. We're hoarders, basically, so.
It's a good analogy.
Yeah. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up for, for your consideration as you move through it.
For sure.
I mean, I like what's there, I just sort of, I hope that taking those things out doesn't diminish its usefulness.
Yeah.
I leave that for you, 'cause you're the one that has to enforce it.
Yeah, and this might be a good, a follow-up question to something I was gonna ask later on. Is there a preference from you folks for separating sign regulations, subdivision regulations as their own code of ordinance? Or do you see it's more appropriate to encapsulate that all within a broader zoning code? The reason I say that is jurisdictions take either one of those two tracks, separate it out or include it all in the same. I guess is there a, because if there's a, and the reason I'm asking that is, if it's all under the, the broad chapter of zoning, you can make the argument that the purpose statements under the zoning section would have more relevancy then to the subsection addressing subdivision.
Or more direct attachment.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I guess, speaking for me, I just want whatever is easiest for you to administer and something that's easiest for any resident who has to use it to be able to use. I mean, the whole point of this is the most efficient way for people to understand and use their land. And be aware of all the options that they have.
Yeah.
Again, as streamlined as possible, so I don't have a format preference, me personally. I don't know what anybody else is thinking.
Anybody else? More indifferent, or?
No, I think, I think he tackled the two key points, so, keeping it simple, communicating clearly.
And it might depend on ultimately what length this zoning code will be, right? If this is gonna be like other communities where their code is like 400-plus pages, then I think it would make more sense to separate it.
I guess I do like the separation a little bit part, though, just to more clearly define things and, and focus on it. I guess I'm not entirely sure just what we're talking about splitting out, but I guess in, if there are benefits to including that all, like you said, under the purpose statements, is there things we want to include and group them together? But I think in general, if they're different, split them out. I mean, you're talking about subdivisions and signs. Pretty different, I think.
One indicator's gonna be how many cross-references you have. If you have to flip back a ton of times between different documents.
And there's probably gonna be more cross, well, more connection between a zoning code and a sign code, 'cause ultimately, sign code regs are based on zoning district. Subdivision code, there's a little more separation, but.
Yeah, you wanna, I guess, limit the amount of redundancy or possible contradictions you have between the sections.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, but in general, I defer to you, you've done well, you're the ones working with this and understand it, I'm just going along for the ride.
I wondered, could you not, a lot of this is redundant within each one, could you not start out with a purpose, a generic purpose that kind of incorporates these, this may be four or five paragraphs? Then when you go into the sign ordinance, you've got these bullet points that make it a little bit more clearer.
Then you're assuming they're gonna read the whole thing, you're gonna read from the start and somebody's looking.
You know, a chapter.
Just jump right to it.
For each, like signs, subdivisions, R1, R whatever, but you've got a generic opening statement, introduction to the zoning code that says, "The purpose is to promote the health, safety, morals, prosperity, aesthetics, and general welfare of this community." That's pretty much standard through what we're saying here on these, in these paragraphs. Why not just make like an introductory page and then have a table of contents? Sign regulations, R1, R2, whatever we decide, and then you're not repeating, "The purpose is to promote the aesthetics, morals, whatever," kind of something like that, maybe.
Take a look, see how that works, yeah, absolutely.
All right, so, I guess, last minute, just party thoughts. So, essentially, once we wrap up code sections as we go, I'm gonna be putting them, having them put on the code rewrite page on the city's website. I'm not planning to take the approach like, like is for the com-plan where it's gonna be brought to council for their blessing, sign-off for each chapter as you go. Obviously, I would encourage council members who listen to the meetings in the future, look at the packets to provide commentary as well, reach out if they have questions. Going forward, it is going to be my goal to have these code reviews occur during our regularly scheduled Plan Commission meetings, 'cause, to be blunt, I don't wanna be scheduling special meetings all the time, and I'm sure neither do you. Looking forward, we're not gonna have anything on the November Plan Commission agenda just because, I mean, I'll be publishing the agenda in about a week. December Plan Commission, I can all but guarantee I will not be having anything on there because that agenda's looking lengthy enough the way it is. So, I'm not gonna be having any, I'm, going forward, I will not be having any code section reviews on a Plan Commission agenda that's already long. I'm not gonna be, I don't think it's fair for any of us to look at proposed code language three, four hours into a meeting.
It needs to get its due.
Yeah, so, I'll probably schedule one special meeting between now and the end of the year and have that be a wrap for the year 2025, otherwise.
Just to hear that.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Anna.
And with that, we are adjourned at 8:18.
A video of this meeting is available for viewing on the city's website, stevenspoint.com/videos.